Everybody rise. Hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission is now in session. The Honorable Howard Shipley presiding. Please remain standing.
At this time, I want to call to order the April 21st, 2022 Hammond County Legislative Body. I'm going to ask Commissioner Step if he would lead us in our invocation, please.
Mr. President.
Our most precious Lord and Father in heaven, we thank the Lord for bringing us all here today. And we pray that through our decisions that we make, the decisions that you'll have us made, so we thank you, Lord, for the good news of our fellow Commissioner Joe Huntsman. Thank you, Lord, for bringing him through this. So we pray for the youth that's here today, leading God them in their lives, Lord, watch over them, get them, Lord, to understand us and the other and how it works, Lord, and just pray for them, and give them in their lives. For you, Lord, you're leading us in all that we do, in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Step. Commissioner Goind, would you lead us in our pledge, please?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Commissioners, if you have not turned on your light, please do so at this time, and we'll do a roll call, please.
Fourteen present.
We do have a court present, so we are open for business. We have a distinguished group of individuals with us tonight, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Perry if he would introduce them to us, please.
This chair, members of the commission, certainly appreciate the opportunity not to speak for you in behalf of our students. A couple of years ago, when I first started, Darryl Brady and I, along with Stan Harville and then also Chris Cates, we came together to create a student leadership group. And of all the things that we've done over the course of my tenure here, this is one of the things that I'm the most proud of. Each year, we select about forty students, or juniors, who we feel possess some leadership skills, who have the kind of qualities that would be necessary to lead this community and this nation after we've retired from the field. And if you're ever concerned about what our future would be, as you begin to look and as you begin to work with some of the students that we have here this evening, you'll have faith in that future. We have worked with this particular group throughout the school year and since the beginning of school, and they're a wonderful group of individuals. They are individuals who take leadership seriously. They're individuals who give back to the community, and we're just so excited to be part of them. And so, we have several, we'll ask all of our students to stand here at this time, just so that you can see them, so. Not everybody was able to do that, because we've got some different ones and some sports activities and different kind of things this evening. But this is a group that we are very proud of. This is a group that we depend on to do a couple of different things, and so we just appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening and to learn a little bit about how our county government works. And they've gone to school board meetings, they go to city council meetings, they attend a lot of civic kind of organizations, so again, we just appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. The next item on our agenda deals with nominations and appointments. You have two individuals that are being appointed to the Civil Service Board, and I'm going to ask the mayor to please introduce those individuals to us at this time.
We have two vacancies, or one vacancy right now, and one that will come up in mid-May on the Civil Service Board. Neil Johnson resigned from the Civil Service Board, and we are asking that Ron Spiller be appointed to his position. And Mr. Spiller is retired in Morristown. He spent thirty-one years as a law enforcement officer in Hillsborough County, Florida, near Tampa, and also spent some years in codes enforcement as well in Hillsborough County. And Ron, if you'll stand. And Ron's here. He's the candidate to fill Neil's spot. And the other position, last night, I received an email from John Fassler, and to resign his position, he's moving to Florida to be closer to family, and his resignation is effective May the 10th. And we knew this was coming. John had already informed Captain Mullins that he would be resigning, and so Captain Mullins had asked that David Beckner, retired police officer from Morristown Police Department, be considered. And I've known David for years and years, and so we are recommending that David fill the slot of John Fassler. And David's had four years in the Marines, and then followed by thirty-eight years as a law enforcement officer with City Morristown. So those are the two individuals that are before you tonight. David, if you'll stand. All right, thank you.
Thank you. What's the, this will be off the board, so we would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Reed.
Second.
Second from Mr. Doty. All those in favor of approving these appointments, Lady Beal was saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the appointments have been approved. We also have before us tonight several names that are being recommended to serve on the County Board of Equalization. Nettie Young, Bill Hicks, Earl Cameron, Ralph Wikerson. Keith Eady is recommending that we approve these appointments. What's the will of the body?
Take a motion.
Take a motion.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Reed. Second from Commissioner Goind. All those in favor of the motion, Lady Beal was saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by saying no, the appointments are approved. Chairman Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 3A, approval of consent calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3A, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 3B, approval of regular calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3B, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The regular calendar is approved.
I'll have, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Step. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Doty, we have a second from Commissioner Aker. Any discussion? Hearing none, then let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Hahn. Thank you.
Item 4A, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved. At this time, we would entertain public comments from the audience regarding items that are on the agenda. Most members of the audience will have three minutes. However, we do have a request from Ms. Noe for five minutes. Ms. Noe, you're recognized at this time.
My name is Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road. I'm very pleased to see all the young people here from the high schools. That's a wonderful program, and I'm glad they're able to see city council, school board, and county commission. On your agenda, what I would like to address are about three or four items. Of course, your monthly checks, that's in finance committee. You're getting ready to approve checks that have already been written, cut, mailed, probably some of them already cashed. Another useless gesture. The other items are about the jail. At your four-eleven committee meetings, project manager Tony Pettit spoke at length about the jail project, and in particular about the change orders. There were some, the second change order to increase the cost is on your agenda tonight. And then there's an amendment for additional design services by the architect. Mr. Pettit also warned of many, many more change orders yet to come. He even said, "The next ones will probably ruffle your feathers." He added that maybe you need to have a meeting with the designer, with Mosley, at some point. You know, I think that point is now. Mr. Pettit mentioned, "Well, you know, when you get a little further down the road, maybe you need to talk, maybe when you're at twenty-five percent." That would be twenty-five million dollars. Now, we're going to talk to the architect. Have a meet and greet with the architect after twenty-five million has been spent? No, talk now. Address the situation now, not after twenty-five million is spent. You've heard the saying, "If you find yourself in a hole, quit digging." Well, there's a corollary to that. If you find yourself in a hole and somebody else is digging, make them quit digging. At least have the architect come to commission once a month to your committee meetings, so you can get direct answers to your questions. The architect has been paid nearly five million dollars already. Nearly five million. Check your Justice Center expense report. Surely, he can come to your finance committee meeting once a month and discuss, explain, and answer questions about change orders and design changes. You are not honoring the people of this county, and you are not doing your due diligence if you sit here and complain about the change orders, but then approve them without full information directly from the architect and/or the contractor, and then with input from Mr. Pettit. One other quick thing is you just approve minutes in your consent calendar. If you look at those minutes, they have two contracts in them for paving the parking lot across the street. One of those contracts was given to you about five or ten minutes before you voted on it, or before the meeting started in March. There's nothing in the minutes that says which of the two contracts, the 31722, or the one you were handed, and that is dated 32422. Which one did you approve? You didn't even get to see the contract until it was supposedly put on your desk at the meeting. Yet not one person asked about the fact that there were two contracts now, or if and why changes were made. They were made for the very reason that I asked whether the attorney had looked at it. He had looked at it shortly before, and he had made the changes about the indemnification clauses. But you know what? There's another thing, another clause in there. There's a clause that says, "If Summers Taylor, the contractor, hires an attorney to enforce or collect on the contract, the county will pay Summers and Taylor's legal fees and expenses." Where's the clause that says, "If the county files or sues to enforce the contract, Summers and Taylor will pay our expenses"? What you were looking at was a contract drawn by the contractor. That is precisely why you should have seven days to review, or not seven, ten days to review a contract. The attorney should review it before it ever comes to you, and the public should have an opportunity, as well as you, to look at it. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the body?
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I have two concerns on your agenda tonight. The first one is I look back over the billing for the last few months. Mr. Capps is still billing for attending the finance committee. Do you folks look at it at all? Do you do your due diligence before you vote on it and pass it? That's our money that you're spending, not yours. Now, some of you look at me like I'm crazy. Thank God, it's almost election time. Maybe some of you'll lose your seats. I certainly hope so. You just need to wake up and smell the coffee. You're not wasting your money, you're wasting hours. Not just mine, everybody out here, including these young people that are coming just now. They can see exactly what you are, and I hope it gets out tonight. Second thing is this wonderful change order that Mr. Pettit discussed last meeting I was here. The last time that I sat and listened, it was between the two change orders, it was a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know about you folks, but that's a lot of money to me. I'm not rich. So I would love to see you do some due diligence and start checking some things. Maybe you don't care. Maybe you've drunk the Kool-Aid and you figure we can afford it. I want to tell you, you can't. You got folks in Brookfield that are paying double tax rate. They have to turn the heat down to pay the grocery bill. You need to wake up and do your jobs. Some of you have, and I'm proud of you, I'll tell you, each one of you, I'm proud of the stand you take. For the rest of you, I hope to God you lose the election and we get some changes.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Anyone else?
My name's Gracie Bunch, and I'm a part of the Youth Leadership Student Group we have here. I just wanted to thank you guys on behalf of our group for your service toward our county. We've learned about how much you guys do for our schools, and I just want to thank you guys for your sacrifices you make for us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes?
Good evening, guys. Chris Black. You guys know me well. Reside at 7335 Evolene Circle in Talbot in the 13th District. Just very quickly, item 6B, Justice Center Change Order Number Two. I'm just going to make this as blunt as I know how to make it. Again, one hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. You quadrupled the gross public debt to help pay for these change orders, to help pay for all of this mess with this Justice Center that you darn well knew was coming down the pike. You passed it up in 2010, when there was a proposal for thirty-three million dollars to fix the Justice Center. In 2015, you had a proposal for forty-five million. Again, kicked it down the road. In 2017, you had a proposal for eighty million dollars. Now, we're, I guess, somewhere around a hundred and five million. Again, please be good stewards of the people's money. I know you haven't been so far, but a change is coming, and good Lord, a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars to saddle these young folks with and generations below them. It's inconceivable, guys. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? We're going to close our public comment, then. We proceed with our business. Commissioner, Chairman, Randy, the Board of the Finance Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6A, this is approval of the monthly checks, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6A, thirteen ye, one nae.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 6B, Justice Center Change Order Number Two, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6B, eleven ye, three nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6C, Amendment for Additional Design Services, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Doty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I'd just like to ask you guys to think about this long and hard. These are proposed changes. These are not changes that our architect is saying is bad. This is things that we're already wanting to add to this. We've already heard from Mr. Pettit about that things are going to ruffle our feathers. Maybe we need to slow down a little bit, not add any extra until we find out what the initial is already going to cost us.
Anyone else? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6C, C, eight ye, six nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6D, Real Estate Consulting Agreement, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6D, ten ye, four nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6E, Demolition and Clearing of Hammond County Property, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6E, eleven ye, three nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F, Boat Dock Lease Agreement. The first part of this is going to be the Second Amendment Lease Agreement between Hammond County, Tennessee, and Hamblin Dock, which I think is now Cherokee Dock LLC. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? We request the people who voted.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't get the second. There we go. Wendy Smith has the second.
Mr. Commissioner D. Smith, you're recognized.
Mr. Shipley, we've got this lined up for eleven hundred dollars a month. Shouldn't we do something about, how long will that last? We're charging the same thing today that we charged in 2003, eleven hundred a month. That's how much we're going to be making. Well, I know anybody here at Rents, a year ago, you'd pay five hundred for a house, you'll pay a thousand for it today. We don't want to run them off, but I think we need to take a look at it where we can negotiate increase net price and not let it sit in there for several years. That's all I had to say about it.
Commissioner Petshaw, you're recognized.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I think we have an escalation clause for rent as we move forward. Is that not correct?
We do. It's covered in the contract.
Anyone else? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6F, one, twelve ye, two nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F, two, the assignment of the lease agreement, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just need one comment. Just one, one change from the assignment that was presented at committee today is the assignment that was presented at committee included the two individuals, the new operators, and it was being assigned to them as individuals. And since that time, they formed an LLC, and so you'll see Cherokee Boat Dock LLC. So the assignment will be from Hamblin Boat Dock to Cherokee Boat Dock and not to the individual.
Anyone else? Commissioner Petshaw, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Again, a clarification on our contract. It started in 2003, but we've got twenty years left on that contract. Is that correct?
It's being extended to twenty-two. It's listed as an operator.
Anyone else? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 6F, two, twelve ye, two nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6G, Resolution 2209, a resolution of the County Commission of Hammond County, Tennessee, authorizing the 2022 AAA Tennessee Community Grant Application, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 6G, thirteen ye, one nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H, Federal Year 22 Homeland Security Grant, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 6H, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, number one, Fund 101 Register of Deeds for 5,800. That was for easy file cabinets, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6I, one, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, two, Fund 151 Debt Service for $20,000. That's for additional revenue added from the trustees' commission, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Item 6I, two, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, three, Fund 101 Sheriff's Department for $34,325, and that was for a sheriff's vehicle that was in a wreck, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6I, three, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, four, Fund 101 Sheriff's Department for $1,852.98, and that was for Chevy Tahoe that was involved in an accident, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6I, four, fourteen ye, zero nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, five, Fund 131 for Highway Department, $45,000 for extra heavy equipment, and I'll put that in the form of a motion and have a question.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Do you want to respond, Barry?
I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, yes.
What heavy equipment is this?
It's for maintenance and repairs. I mean, everything's gone up this year. Y'all know that in business in general, especially the emission parts that we have to replace and that type of thing, hydraulics. I mean, it's everything with regards to equipment, vehicles, trucks. It's just, it's gone up this year. You know, we could go over more particulars, but that generally is what's going on. We took what we spent thus far and projected it on out to the end of the year, and that's what it projects out to be. And that, it may not end up being that much. You don't know what's going to, you know what's going to need maintained, but you don't know what's going to need repaired, so we're just trying to have enough money in there to cover it if we need it. I certainly don't want, don't want to need it, but we may.
Commissioner Petshaw, you're recognized.
He's answered my question. I was concerned about what we had going on.
Anybody else? Commissioner Step?
You having trouble getting parts?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, from what the city's experiencing, sometimes a lot of trouble, sometimes much, sometimes you get in things in days, but it's just varying from one part to the other. But we're experiencing the most rise in cost on emission control parts, that type of thing.
Commissioner Doty, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit of info from industry. I might back Barry on this because dealing with the maintenance side for this entire economic crunch, downturn, whatever you want to call it, parts are outrageous. Those that have them can charge whatever they want because they're not being produced. I feel the pain. I'm glad he's trying to budget it the best he can. But a lot of our parts have went up 10 to 20-fold. We had a motor today that I tried to order that had been $300 to $350 for a three-phase motor that was $3,600 with a 28-week lead time. So I commend you for being able to manage it without losing your cool sometimes. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner D. Smith, you're recognized.
You got any particular items that you really need right now that's going to shut us down tomorrow?
Well, we have, we've got enough, you know, we've got two or three spares in the garbage department. And we just make adjustments in the highway department. Don't have many spare vehicles, but we just make adjustments and change our activity if we need to.
Wouldn't this be a good time to up your budget?
It would be.
Instead of spending $45,000, just up your budget, see if you can get a budget approved for more money for parts.
Essentially, that's what's going on here. But in looking at next year's budget, we're looking at that issue hard.
Barry, this doesn't have anything to do with, where are we with the garbage truck that was backordered?
It's supposed to be manufactured in quarter three, which starts, that'd start in July. July to September. We don't know exactly what the date is, but they just tell us quarter three. And then, of course, the garbage body for the backhoe is already sitting there waiting on the chassis. So that's all we know at this point, it's quarter three.
Okay.
Is that the Mack?
Yes.
Would pay extra to get it earlier?
Paid extra because we had to switch from Kenworth to the Mack.
Anyone else? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6I, five, thirteen yay, one nine.
The motion is approved.
Item 6I, six, Fund 131 for Highway Department, $6,000 on additional fencing. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Barry, could you give us a, exactly? It's guard rail. We've had more guard rail damage this year than last, and I've got some more still to get repaired. Ideally, we'd get an accident report and be able to recover those costs, but that hardly ever happens. You just don't get an accident report on most of them because they hit and run type situation. But we've got some more still to repair, so I need some more money.
Understood.
Commissioner D. Smith?
He answered the question I was going to ask him.
Okay.
Guard rail.
Anyone else? Let's vote the motion then.
Item 6I, six, fourteen yay, zero nine.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and the board. At this time, the Chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 7A, Interlocal Cooperation Agreement for Pine Brook Radio Signal Site. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 7A, fourteen yay, zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Item 7B, surplus items from the Hamlin County Sheriff's Department. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 7B, fourteen yay, zero nine.
The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Goins. At this time, we will entertain public comments on non-agenda items only. We do have a request for five minutes from Mrs. Noe. You're recognized at this time, please. Mrs. Noe, we can't get the timer, so she's going to do the time for you. Okay?
Give me a 30-second one. My name is Linda Noe, Joe Stevens Road. On non-agenda items, I like to talk about lawsuits. Nine of you voted on 9/13/21 for the Shipley lawsuit to sue citizens exercising their constitutional right to ask that you save $30 million and go with the simple, safe, and easy one-level jail like Coffee County. File that lawsuit or admit, as the mayor knows, that the vote on 9/13/21 was not valid to authorize a lawsuit. Quit playing games. It wasn't valid. Admit it and let the citizens who you were going to sue know that. Of course, after that, you voted for the Goins lawsuit to ask a judge to let you have anyone not following your rules removed from the meeting. Of course, we have trouble with your rules to begin with, and we've never had a rules committee in over a year now. And that's you, Mr. DeBoer. They keep saying you're the one that could do it. So do it. And as far as the lawsuit goes, just like the one on the little piece of foam, put up or shut up. Quit leaving people hanging. Quit passing things and then just letting it hang there. If you mean it, and I assume your vote meant it, then do it. I anticipate that tearing down the building on the Hale property will come up. Of course, Mr. Shipley, if you'll look back on the 8/10/20 meeting, you pled with Mr. Britton, let's save that. It has architectural value. It has historical value. And Mr. Britton said on the video that, well, it wasn't on the plans to save it, but it is the intention to save it. And then in March of 2022, it's gone. Now, I understand there's supposedly a reason. It had termites. Maybe it did. I'm not saying it didn't. But you know what? If it had termites, the mayor could come here, get a legal vote, because you are the only ones who have authority to demolish or dispose of county property. It's not only what he did, it's how he did it. And as far as I know, unless somebody wants to correct me, and I hope it's true, why didn't he at least tell you? You all sat here like you didn't have a clue when it was mentioned in March and when it was mentioned on April 11. Why didn't you say, well, we know about it. We've been told and we know why. Why is it all a secret down in the mayor's office? Why do you let it be a secret? Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission on non-agenda items?
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. Folks, this is the show that I had on when Mr. Shipley had me stopped at the door downstairs and told I either had to turn my shirt inside out or wear something over. If any of you think it's obnoxious, please let me know. I wear it just about anywhere I go. I wore it campaigning today, and there wasn't anybody that complained about it. Also, the lawsuit concerning the foam on the shirts, again, I was the guinea pig. You know, you folks either need to do what you voted on or you need to back off and do what's right. Now, personally, I'm ashamed of the commissioner that represents my district because she voted to push that. And I would have thought with Christian courtesy of speech and demeanor that she would have been a better person. But that's just my personal opinion. Hope the voters agree with me. But you folks need to clear off the useless things that you've put on the books or you need to get the ball on the road and get it going. I, for one, am tired of being bullied. I'm tired of sitting in fear, and I'm too old for that, okay? You need to either put it up or shut up, as my grandchild says. I'm not proud of any of you that voted for that. You're less than what you should be. You should be human beings. You have not done a very good job. You have not been a good steward, and you certainly have not represented me very well. I've tried to discuss. I can't even get an answer for an email. Can't even get an answer for a phone call. I hope the rest of you do a better job. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Ann Horner, 1535 Panther Creek Road. Only 12 years to pay for the jail. Is that correct? Nobody knows?
Didn't hear you.
Only 12 years to pay for the jail? That's what?
Wish.
That's what several people are saying. My commissioner is saying that on his campaign material. I think probably 20 to 30 is more like it. Certain commissioners need to be more honest. And to those of you with the idea that a referendum wasn't necessary on an expenditure as large as this jail, it's not a matter of us just trusting you because we voted for you. Your job is not to make executive decisions. Your job is to give the people a voice. We trusted you knew how to even conduct a meeting. That's why we voted for you, but apparently we were wrong. Let it be known in front of these witnesses that just like Joe Biden's not my president, Mr. Hahn's not my commissioner. And Mr. Shipley, can you please help your crew that doesn't understand the truth and how this representative stuff is supposed to work? Could you just help them understand that, please? Then we wouldn't have all this conflict.
This little building. A beautiful little building, historically actually, torn down with no authority to tear it down. The excuse is, well, I couldn't take it in front of the commission but have it voted on because it was full of termites. Termites have no time limit, folks. If this building was full of termites, it wasn't going to hurt it to stay standing until it could be brought in front of this commission and voted on as would have been proper. If the termites had eaten up and it had fell down and that went length of time, then we could said, well, yeah, it had termites. But instead, this gorgeous building was raised. And then you've got the lumber. The lumber that's loaded on these two trailers. Well, you know, I've worked in construction myself. I understand demolition. I understand when you've got a little building like this and you tear it down, you throw it on the trailers and you haul it to the dump. Unless that lumber's good and you want to save it for something, then you load it like this, nice and neatly on trailers. I'm not buying the termites. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not buying the termites. And then also, these lawsuits. Every time you decide that you don't like what we say, you holler lawsuit at us. Well, I'm just like the rest of them. Put up or shut up. Stop trying to hold stuff over our heads because you need to know it's not working.
Lynn Holden, West Point Drive. Mr. Shipley, I want to thank you for letting Mr. Britton call me and text me and tell me about what he did to the building. He did say he tore it down because it was termite infected. But still, yet, he should have brought it before you all to vote on. I appreciate him letting me know, you know, how that he did. And he was honest by telling me that he had it torn down. And he also said that it didn't cost the taxpayers any money whatsoever because he used the people that were in jail. Well, they need to do something. They don't do a whole lot, so I don't think it hurt them. But I do appreciate you getting back with Mr. Britton and telling Mr. Britton to text me and let me know so I could call him. And I did call him, and I talked to him. But I still think you should have brought it before county commission because people at work at the jail, even a little file cabinet, they had to bring it before the county commission to have it voted on. A little file cabinet. And, you know, I know he's the mayor, but still, yet, he ought to be just like the other department heads. He ought to have to do just like them, bring it before county commission. But I do appreciate him calling me and letting me know that he did tear it down.
Anyone else?
Todd Frohmeier, 1212 Hodg Drive, Morristown. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm here to talk about the commission and its members being out of touch. Last time I was here speaking before the commission, one of the things I touched on was the dire state of the EMS. I noted an emergency meeting they were going to have and suggested the board show up at the meeting. They need to do something. You need to do something to save the EMS. Kudos to Commissioner Petshaw, who did show up. I didn't recognize him at first, but hopefully I'll get that one again. According to the minutes, though, it looks like Commissioner Ward is on the board, and he hasn't shown up at the last couple of meetings, including the emergency one. Now, as many of you know, I'm the chair of the Hamlin County Democrats. I'm also running for office recently. But separate and apart from those things, I decided after the first of the year to start attending meetings of boards and committees here in Hamlin County and Morristown. It was a good way for me to get to know the players in the area. I've learned a lot of good information from those meetings. So I say you're out of touch. One way to get in touch would be to get involved in some of these meetings. How many meetings, you ask? Well, I'll give you a list of the ones on my radar. Health Council, Executive Committee of the Joint Morristown-Hamblin Economic and Community Development Board, Parks and Rec Board. Kudos to Commissioner Hahn, who I think is on that. Maybe I've seen you there. Civil Service Board. You appointed somebody to that. This evening, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Morristown Tree Board, Morristown-Hamblin Humane Society, Morristown Housing Authority, Morristown Regional Airport Commission, Morristown-Hamblin Solid Waste, Morristown-Hamblin Library Board, Ambulance Authority, Industrial Development Board, Hamlin County Emergency Communications Board, Lakeway Area Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization Executive Board, Morristown Utilities Commission, Hamlin County Community Advisory Board, Hamlin County Road Commission, Local Emergency Planning Committee, and one I learned about tonight, the Board of Equalization, which I think meets once a year. I just looked on the website. I'm going to put that one on my list. Now, I know some of you may be on some of these boards, and I shouted out Commissioners Petshaw and Hahn. And if I miss someone, I apologize. But I know you make appointments to the board. You did two tonight. But how can you make appointments to the board if you don't know what they're doing? The only way to know is to come to the meetings and find out. And the people you appoint to the boards try to look outside the usual suspects. It feels like I see the same similar people on a lot of these boards. So I say you're out of touch. The best way to remedy that, as I said, might... The best way to remedy that, as I said, might be for you to attend the meetings. You know, if you're out of touch, maybe the voters send you packing. I mean, certainly from my perspective, I tried to find Democratic opponents for a lot of you. I only got four this year. Hopefully, I'll do better in four years. And I know the folks over my shoulder have worked to give you Republican primary opponents. But at the end of the day, we know many of you are going to be here again, starting in September. And what I'd like to say is do better. If you're out of touch, then get in touch. And one of the ways to do that would be to start attending these meetings of committees and boards that you appoint people to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Chris Black. Y'all have my address already, so let's go ahead and jump right into this. A few issues that I have tonight that I want to address in the time I've got. The first being the so-called 12 or 13 years to pay off the jail, whatever Ms. Horner said. Somebody's lying here if they're saying that because when you guys just quadrupled the gross public debt to 129 million, y'all said that part of that was for the school or was for the jail, part of it was for the schools. If that part was for the jail, in fact, I know for a fact that you're not going to begin to have that paid off to reach maturation until 2073, according to Cumberland Securities. They work for y'all, so who's telling the truth? Now, the other issue that I have for you guys tonight, something that I found out yesterday, and I hope that y'all will take it under advisement and go to the state legislature about this, either with Representative Faison or with Representative Eldridge, is the fact that in the state of Tennessee, we don't have a voter registration application in any language other than English. Now, that might be fine for you and me, but according to statistics from the federal government in the South, and that would start in the state of Kentucky and move on down for those who are geographically challenged, over 60% of all voter registrations in 2020 were Latino. The state of North Carolina has a Latino voter registration application. Virginia, Georgia, although we're not going to talk about Georgia because y'all don't like to talk about Georgia. That's a bad state now for Republicans, but, and I agree. But nonetheless, we have one of the largest populations of Latinos in Hamlin County of any county in the state of Tennessee, and we're actually one of the largest populations of Mexicans in the country. In fact, when the consulate comes and they take the little bus tour around the country, the only small town that's on there is Morristown, Tennessee. So, pretty, pretty big there. Surely to God, if you guys live up to your conservative values, you know that Latinos are going to vote overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly conservative. We've seen that in Texas. That's why Latinos are on the rise there, or at least participation. So I would ask that you go to the state legislature, as being one of the largest communities or representative bodies that represents these individuals, and ask the state of Tennessee to get off their butts and let's start drafting a voter registration application that will include a large segment of our community's population. Finally, I just want to speak on y'all letting Mayor Britton do whatever he did over here at the Hale House. I know y'all are used to getting pushed around by him. I mean, there's a reason why Coag calls him King Bill Britton, but, you know, when are y'all going to stand up and grow a pair and tell him that y'all have a say in some things? I mean, I like Bill. I consider Bill a friend, but hell, I'll tell a friend when they're wrong, I've told him when he's wrong, and I'll continue to do it. God willing, in August, you'll have a new mayor, going to look different from all the previous ones, hopefully. But nonetheless, just wanted to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else? Want to call?
Just for a couple of minutes, two things. One is to update you on the bond issue, the bonds that were sold this week. We had Cumberland Securities sold the bonds on Tuesday. We had eight companies bid on the bonds. They were sold at a premium, which means that we, proceeds will equal $97.4 million, and we only had to issue a little over $91 million. So issued $91 million in bonds to generate $97.4 million in money for the Justice Center and the school projects. And the true interest costs were at 3.61%. So we were able to issue those before the market took a tick up. So I wanted to update you on that. And also, before that, Moody's and S&amp;P also issued their credit ratings for Hamlin County and maintained our highest rating that we've had at AA and AA- or AA3 and AA-. So our credit rating remains strong, and our showing in the bond market remains strong. I want to just take a minute and respond to Mr. Strizzulo's claim last week that I committed a felony by altering official county documents. And I want to address that and give the real facts because what he said was false. Sometimes he claims himself to be a journalist or a part of the press. And one thing, being a former professional reporter is you get the story right. That's the very first priority, and he didn't do that. Okay. Process of preparing minutes for the county commission meeting. At the county clerk's office, they prepare a draft of the minutes after the meeting and then submits the draft to me to review for grammar, for spelling, for clarity of some of the wording. I make some changes every now and then, not necessarily every meeting. So I submit the draft back to the clerk's office after I make my suggestions, and then it is added to the minutes of the commission the following month. The draft that I mark up is not an official document. It's a draft of the minutes, and the minutes do not become official until the following month. Now, the example that Mr. Strizzulo pointed to in August of 2020, the committee minutes. Now, the committee minutes on August 10 authorized me and Commissioner Horner to negotiate the contract with the highest-ranked firm for the project manager. And the committee minutes reflect that. The commit, now, committee minutes reflect that. Between the committee meeting on August the 10th and the commission meeting on August the 20th, Commissioner Horner and I did what we were instructed to do. We negotiated with the top-ranked proposer, which was Burwell Construction. We negotiated a contract with the company. The contract, along with the scope of work, was presented to the commission for a vote on the 20th of August. The commission voted on the 20th to approve the contract with Burwell with a 10 to 4 vote. A draft of the commission minutes submitted to me reflected the action of the committee, not the commission. And if you look at the document that Mr. Strizzulo distributed last week, it was identical to the committee minutes, not what the commission did. So I took the draft, I reflected and wrote on the draft the vote on the Burwell contract. I corrected the draft of the minutes of the commission meeting and returned it to the clerk's office. Then we talked about it. County commission approved the minutes of the August meeting in September. That's when the draft became an official record. So there were no official documents changed. Our process that ensures that the commission has the most accurate minutes possible worked because the draft minutes were wrong. And I corrected them and then discussed it with the county clerk's office. No law was violated. The citizens of Hamlin County were served, and there was a disservice done to our citizens last week. And I just wanted to give my side of the story.
Chairman, before they hauled Bobby Hahn off the prison, I checked with the post office down there, and they, you know how he said, Kyle, you know, they said that you could put something on the mailbox, like he did, stamped, taped it to it. They said you could put anything on that mailbox that you want, anything. People put Christmas trees on there, they said. The people, Boy Scouts used to hang stuff on there, the phone books you just hang on there. You can put anything you want on the mailbox. Just can't put it inside. Just can't put it inside. That's from the post office itself. So Bobby, I think we can keep you out of prison.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I got a question for Bill. Bill, back in the day, we used to get, you know, when I was on our years ago, and a lot of these other guys on it, we'd get in the consent calendar where you go back. You vote on a consent calendar for last month's. We used to have that little breakdown. It told how everybody voted. I've got it back when I went on commission, John Smith was on it. I got that little breakdown. It says on the 10-day rule, it told everybody that voted for the 10-day rule. And that was on, that was in the minutes of the commission meeting. But yet, if we look at, if we look at what Jim tells us to start off with, to get the minutes of last month's meeting, we don't know what those minutes are. Some of the things are on there, finance is on there, but other things are not on there. That might be a way to correct, if Bill changes other stuff, that we could do it.
Now, the minutes that the clerk's office files, it has the votes on it, has the sheet.
It's on the website, too. It's on the website also.
It's all done properly.
This is it. This is the 10-day rule, and that was passed through the commission. That's your 10-day rule. All of you know, I heard you're on there, Tim, you're on there, Randy, you're on there. But I don't know how we can approve the minutes of the last month's commission meeting if we don't know what they are. I asked Penny Petty, I said, "How do we know?" She said, "Well, it's on the county website." I don't do the county website. So if we're just sitting here voting on something and we don't know really what's on it, I don't think there's justice in there.
Anyone else? To call your attention to the announcements, you can see those for yourself. I want you to particularly note the budget meetings during the month of May. We'll start, I think, on May the 17th at 5:00 p.m. here in the courtroom. Don't forget to leave your notebooks here so they can be updated. We'll stand adjourned.